Welcome to the El Dorado County District Two Supervisor Candidates Forum. My name is Elizabeth Leslie and I'm here from the League of Women Voters of El Dorado County. Tonight, we will be speaking to two candidates running for office for District Two. But first, let's talk a little bit about voting in California. Every registered voter in California will be receiving a vote by mail ballot, just like this one. Every ballot will go to each registered person. You can still register online right now by going to registertovote.ca.gov. No postage is required on your vote by mail ballot, and as long as it's postmarked by November 3rd, it has 17 days to arrive at the elections office to be counted. You can drop your ballot off at the elections office, you can mail it, or you can still vote in person. For questions about your voter registration or about your vote by mail ballot, please contact the El Dorado County Elections Office. You can call them at (530) 621-7480. Also, please visit the League of Women Voters' online nonpartisan voter guide called votersedge.org. There you can find information about these candidates, as well as everything else that is on your ballot, and where, and when, and how you can vote. So first, let's go over the rules before we begin. For timing, Andrew Muse Fisher from the El Dorado County League of Women Voters will be here offering timing cues visually to our candidates. There are two minutes allowed for opening statements, one and a half minutes to respond to the questions, and one minute for closing statements. The order of the candidates will begin in alphabetical order by last name, and then I will rotate between the candidates. Please remember that the candidates will not refer to other candidates or their qualifications, and I know that we will have a clean, civil, and informative discussion tonight. So with that, let's get started. The opening remarks will start with Mr. Pemlot. Please begin.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to have this panel discussion tonight. So I'm Ken Pemlot, obviously candidate for District Two Supervisor here in El Dorado County. I've spent over three decades as a firefighter here in California, worked my way up through the ranks at CAL FIRE, ultimately retiring at the end of 2018 as the Chief of CAL FIRE and California State Forester. My wife Karen and I have lived in Cameron Park here in El Dorado County for over 17 years. We raised our two sons, dear, and we love the county. We enjoy the lifestyle, the environment, and we plan to stay. We're currently building, if you call it our forever home, in South County in Mount Ockham, where we manage a piece of forest land that we're restoring and managing as a mixed conifer forest. I'm a registered no-party preference candidate, and that truly reflects where I stand, particularly for an office such as Board of Supervisors, which is nonpartisan. My career throughout CAL FIRE has been the hallmark of working across the aisle, bringing people together to work on challenging issues, some of the most challenging fire seasons in the state, as well as some of the most challenging budget crises that we've faced in California. I believe strongly in a number of issues here in the county, certainly sensible and responsible growth, following the tenants of our general plan that was laid out a number of years ago to balance growth with our rural agricultural lifestyle throughout the county. Long-term budget sustainability. Now more than ever, with the challenges of COVID and the other economic issues and public health issues, we need to continue to live within our means and our budget and find opportunities to bring in additional money, funding, grants, everything that we can do to get our businesses back online and support our infrastructure roads and continue to prosper as a county. And then lastly, and very critical right now, the wildfire threat to El Dorado County and all of California. We're experiencing the most challenging fire conditions we've ever faced. I want to continue to work and use my experience to help El Dorado County work through these challenges and help protect our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. George, you're next for your opening remarks.
Can you hear me? I want to thank the Women's Voters and stuff for having this on tonight and listened to both of us, Ken and myself. And anyway, I'm going to tell you a little bit about me. I'm eight-generation in El Dorado County. Our family arrived here in the early 1840s. I've owned my business for 47 years, a small business and stuff, and my wife has a small business too. I care about this county. I've been here a long, long time. There's issues, especially when you're talking about roads, you know, especially when the roads are deteriorating and stuff, and we don't have money set aside for roads and stuff like we used to have. We need to have a balanced budget, definitely. And I wanted to have a budget oversight committee that look into our budget and stuff, and maybe we could save money, but also look into it if there's wasteful spending, because I believe there's a lot of wasteful spending in this county. I care about the people here. I've lived here a long, long time. I live in Somerset is where I live right now, but I have my son in El Dorado. The people here, there's a lot of concerns. You know, I want to keep, maintain our open spaces. I want to maintain our rural lifestyle that everybody loves, especially when people come up here and they move up here, they love it up here. And I want to make sure we can preserve that. I want to fill our business parks, because we have business parks right now that are, they're not full. We need to bring more businesses here, small manufacturing companies, to fill our business parks. We need to sustain a good tax base here, so people don't go elsewhere. And the problem here is we're always building houses, build, 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 but we're not bringing new ideas and new technology or businesses to our county. I want to bring logging back to our county, I think, big thing that needs to be done. I want to build a cogent plant that we take that dead debris and use it for electricity for our county, sustain it, but also it would bring a good, high-paying jobs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So for our first question, we are going to kick it off with you, George. Are you ready? You froze for a minute there, but I think you're back now. Okay. Please describe what specific experience you have to assume the responsibility of 192,000 people and roughly a $650 million budget.
Well, the thing is, I've been in business for 47 years. I know how to balance a budget. You have to, especially when you own a small business. But also, I'm a pastor of a church, which, you know, I preach to a lot of my constituents and stuff that are, you know, that come to our little church and stuff. I just care about this county. I know I was on the grand jury for, I also was on the solid waste advisory plan for our county. You know, I've got a lot of good ideas, and I can bring new ideas and new technology to our county. I think outside the box is what I do, and that's what needs to happen. This county has been stagnant for a long time. Our county was one of the richest counties that we had in the state of California, with the mills and the mining that was going on, 15 mills. Now we have one, and it's a planing mill right now, and that's El Dorado Northern. It's kind of sad to me that we don't have good, high-paying jobs here in our county. I'm going to make sure that I do that and bring that new ideas and new technology here that people would love to move here, because you can't make it on a $15 an hour job. We've got to sustain good, high-paying jobs, like small manufacturing companies, you know, and a mill would be a great thing to do, especially cleaning our easements. That's where 90% of the fires start, and we can put this dead debris into this cogent plant, but also our garbage too, because it will reduce our carbon footprint and will get more tax credits for our county.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you, Elizabeth. So over 30 years in public service with CAL FIRE, again, working my way through the ranks, starting out as a firefighter. As part of my duties with CAL FIRE, I was the Fire Chief for the City of Moreno Valley under a cooperative agreement. So I managed six fire stations within the city and our budget, and interacted with the city council as one of the staff members and department heads. Ultimately, worked my way through the ranks and eight years as the Chief of CAL FIRE, leading 8,000 men and women across the entire state of California, responding to some, again, the most challenging wildland fires and natural disasters that we've faced and continue to face across the state. I was responsible for bringing in and balancing a $2.6 billion budget at CAL FIRE, and that included, again, testifying in front of the state legislature to justify programs and put programs in place and to make significant budget reductions. I was responsible during the last recession to cut over $300 million from CAL FIRE's budget and find ways to continue to provide services. I've built relationships throughout my career at the local, state, and federal level. I've lobbied in Washington DC, bringing aircraft and other air tankers from the federal government to California to be used, not only here in El Dorado County, but all over the state. So again, built relationships and have an understanding how budgets work and what the responsibility is to serve the people that we work for. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, starting off with this next question, we will be starting with you, Ken, this time. So can you tell us about what is your vision for future residential and commercial development? And what would your priorities be?
Absolutely. So obviously, the general plan originally laid out the zones, particularly in the west end of the county, El Dorado Hills, Cameron Park, you know, where the more dense development, the urban areas would be. And then as we move east into the county, along the Highway 50 corridor, we have the designated agricultural lands, our wineries, our large ranches, our forest land. So the county's essentially laid out, and we have yet to build out all those areas that were originally identified. We have a lot of areas that we continue to work on. We need to provide infill in areas that have been designated for development, to take advantage of areas that have already been zoned for development. Similar to what George said, we absolutely need to take advantage of our existing business parks. The business park in El Dorado Hills is absolutely underdeveloped, and there's certainly some challenges there with the overarching structure in order to provide continuity and organization there that can allow for bringing in infrastructure and other improvements to make that more palatable. Overall, we've got to invest in infrastructure in the county to attract more opportunities for business so that it's more palatable, and we find opportunities for people to be able to do business here that's affordable, and they have, again, the technology and the infrastructure available to them in the areas of the county where it's been designated to get that work done.
Thank you. George, it's your turn to answer, and please let me know if you need me to repeat the question.
Repeat the question, please.
This question is about what is your vision for future residential and commercial development? And what would your priorities be in that development?
One of the biggest things we have is we need to follow the 2004 general plan. That was very critical, and there's been some things that have happened that we built out a little bit too far and not followed that plan. So I want to make sure that we follow the 2004 general plan that we put in place quite a few years back. The thing is, we need to bring new ideas and new technology to our county, and especially these small manufacturing companies that we can produce, you know, good things, but also we can bring higher-paying jobs to people that live here and support and sustain, you know, the housing development when it does expand. I want to make sure that we keep our rural lifestyle. I also want to make sure that we have the adequate buffer zones around our ranches and stuff like that, so they don't dwindle, because a lot of things that happened in the past when people had agricultural property, the county went in and changed it without them even knowing it and made it rural, and people were very, very upset. And that's one of the biggest things that I want to make sure that if there's people, property is zoned agricultural, remains agricultural. Because a big thing, agricultural business in our county is fantastic. With Apple Hill that's going on, our wineries, you know, we have also our Christmas tree farms. I want to make sure that we have good, adequate, sustainable, you know, growth that we have in our county, but also we've got to bring new ideas and new technology here, because, and we need to think more outside the box, and I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. In front of the next question, George, you will be starting first. And we received quite a few questions about the roads and traffic. So this is always a big topic. So can you tell us, as county supervisor, what would you recommend and enact in order to address both the issues of bad roads and bad traffic?
Well, the biggest thing in the budget that used to happen before, they used to set aside about $2.5 million from the budget every year to fix and repair our roads. That's not happening today. There's $0 that goes into it. So then they got to scramble to be able to find money to be able to sustain our roads, and that's one reason why our roads are not fixed. We have a new courthouse that's going to go in soon, but there's $2.5 or $3.5 million set aside for the new driveway and the new road to the new courthouse. They need to take that money and fix our roads. You know, this is crazy what is going on, and we also do not have enough manpower. I mean, you've got to consider, you have 20 people working for DOT that does 795 miles of road on the west end of the county. It's not right. We're losing employees left and right, because these people can't sustain their jobs. They can't work for $20 or $21 an hour anymore and sustain a good lifestyle and support their homes. And that's what I want to do. I want to make sure that we consider the employees, because employees should be getting paid more. I think that's a good thing. So people with a training and everything, that doesn't go anywhere. You've got to understand, when you have 20 people, that's not enough to clean easements, repair the roads, and all they do, the other adequate things are ditches and culverts. So there's a lot of things that have to be maintained, and I will make sure that our tax money goes to the right thing and fix our roads.
Thank you, George. Ken, your turn to answer.
Well, certainly similar to George, the rural lifestyle in El Dorado County is why we live here. It's why I live here, my family is here. It's important to us, and more importantly, it's important to the residents of the county who put it in the general plan in 2004. It's critical. But the trade-offs with some of that, of course, our budget's very tight. We don't have the revenues that maybe some of the more populated counties have. Transportation directly takes, you know, the impact of our revenue shortfalls when we want to make these kinds of improvements. So we need to obviously sit down with the Department of Transportation and continue to look at any efficiencies we can find within that operation to see where we can, again, squeeze out any extra dollar, and again, really make our priority working towards our roads, because the further we fall back in our maintenance, the more the roads fall in disrepair. When drainage ditches and culverts plug, they wash out during the winter rains, which exacerbates the maintenance problem. I want to continue to advocate with the state to get El Dorado County's fair share of the road tax. We're getting about half of what was allocated and promised to the state. So we need to continue to work with the state to bring that tax revenue into El Dorado County and use it here. We also need to take a look at our traffic impact mitigation fees and how we're implementing that around the county, and continue to have conversation about what's the best investment and where we want to put that. And then continue to work with the development community as new developments come in, and how do we apportion improving our roads as we bring in additional houses and other programs under and improve the infrastructure as part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our next question, Ken, you will be starting on this question. What will you do to improve the wildfire safety of the district and of the county?
So obviously, there's a lot of work to do here. And first and foremost, it's continuing to support the 25 Fire Safe Councils that we have here in El Dorado County under the umbrella of the County Fire Safe Council. It's advocating for more grants and opportunities at the state and federal level to bring those monies. We're doing an amazing amount of work here in the county with our community chipping programs, with our FireWise USA programs and our fuel breaks. A lot of work going on by using those grant dollars, and we want to continue to advocate to bring that in. We want to work with PG&E to continue to advocate for more clearance, the requirements to get power lines, right of ways clear, and where those intersect with roads, so that we can leverage the work of the Department of Transportation, our Fire Safe Councils, and PG&E utility corridors to really expand the areas that we're getting cleared to help improve that. We've got a lot of work to do to continue to push the insurance companies not to cancel insurance policies here in the county and the wildland-urban interface, working with our partner counties and working with the legislature to really bring the insurance companies to the table to ensure their underwriting policies for the people here in the county and around the state. Working with our partners, Fire Adapted 50, where much effort has gone on in coordinating work with stakeholders, the Resource Conservation District, Fire Safe Councils, Forest Service, and others to bring funding and cooperative projects into the county to reduce the risk, implementing our vegetation management program and the Vegetation Management Ordinance to help everyone get their defensible space cleared around their homes.
Thank you. George, your turn to answer the question about wildfire safety.
One of the things that I talked about is these easements, the overgrowth in our easements and stuff. When you look at our easements now, you've got the trees and the growth is going over from one side to the other side and stuff. So the fire gets started and stuff in our easements, it goes from one side of the road to the other, it can climb in us like a tunnel, you know. So we need to maintain and clean our easements. There should be at least a 30-foot setback, even 50 feet on each side of the roads. But also, you've got to understand, our forest management has been bad for years. You know, our family is a bunch of loggers, I can tell you, loggers and miners, and this is what our family was for years and years and generations. And we need to bring logging back to our county and stuff, and we need to clean our forests, because, you know, you've got to understand, these horrific fires are not good. And what happens when you have these horrific fires and stuff that go in and stuff like, we don't want to be like Paradise, what happened to Paradise. So I want to bring logging back. I think it would be a great thing. I'd like to see a mill be brought back into our county that produces high-paying jobs. I'd like to see a cogent plant where we can take all the dead debris out of these easements and stuff that we can take and burn that into this cogent plant or bring good jobs, but also produce electricity, especially when we're dealing with PGD, especially when the times when they shut our power off, you know, and then we have to end up suffering. There's a lot of people that are suffering out there because of it. I want to make sure that these people, we have a good escape route, you know, and a plan that especially when we have a horrific fire, that we don't end up like Paradise, and that'll be put in place, especially if I get elected supervisor of District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our next question, we will be starting with you, George, and it's a little bit of a follow-up question to the last one. And it's regarding the availability of homeowners insurance. There seems to be a crisis here, and how will you, as supervisor, help property owners navigate this situation?
You know, I talked about this county can be self-insured, and this has been part of my campaign for a long, long time. You figure we got 196,000 parcels in this county, all right? Let's say if we could, $1,000 per parcel, that'll bring $196 million per year. Look how much money you could generate over a five-year period. Not only that, it can happen, because the state already has its insurance program. We pay $3,500 in her per year if their insurance gets canceled. We could do the same thing. We could be self-insured. I've already talked to Lloyds of London. We can have a bond. Once that bond is paid off, we could be self-insured. And the thing is, is the people can be the shareholders. The constituents of El Dorado County can be the shareholders of this insurance. You know, I think it's a great thing, because people are suffering right now. I know a person right now that I think about 80 acres he has. He's paying $20,000 a year for fire insurance. It's absolutely ridiculous is what it is. So I want to work on that. I think we can bring this new idea to this county and stuff. The county's already self-insured anyway. The whole county is. Their employees suffer self-insure. We could do the same thing for the residents of El Dorado County. I've got a great idea, and I think we can get that moving to help these people be able to remain in their house, so they don't lose their homes or have to move somewhere else.
Thank you. Ken?
So to me, the insurance, the responsibility for providing homeowners insurance falls square with the insurance industry. I'm not interested in the county taking on another role where probably 30% to 40% of the money coming in to pay the premium is going to go to overhead. Someone's got to do the claims, someone has to underwrite, somebody has to follow up. And one fire like Paradise will bankrupt the county if they have to pay out multi-millions of dollars of claims over, you know, acres and acres that we have here in the county. We must hold the insurance company's feet to the fire. They've been engaging in this discussion, working with the California State Association of Counties, the rural counties, regional representatives, state legislatures, the state insurance commissioner. We continue to find ways to bring insurance back. It's going to come back. It's coming back in a new look. There are already companies that are starting to look at underwriting, and we need to continue that process. But we also have to do our part in the county. That's why the county was forward-thinking and enacting the Vegetation Management Ordinance, so that now we have a county ordinance that's requiring every homeowner in the wildland to do their 100 feet of defensible space clearance. And that is, again, showing to the insurance commissioner and the companies that we're doing our part, and we need to continue to show that incentive, so they will come back. We have a lot of work to do. Many of the Fire Safe Councils are obtaining FireWise USA designations. A number of the insurance carriers are offering discounts for the communities that have cleaned up their community or are now FireWise. So we need to continue to work with the insurance companies, hold their feet to the fire through the legislature and our partner counties.
Thank you. And Ken, you will start with this next question. The Board of Supervisors approved measures to authorize the Sheriff's Department to eradicate illegal marijuana grows and to use aerial surveillance, among other tools, to identify these grows to facilitate this eradication. If you're elected, we vote to continue the board's support of this program.
So from a personal perspective, and I've shared this very clearly in great conversations with Rod Miller at the Growers Alliance, et cetera, I come from a perspective, a moral perspective, I don't like marijuana. I have a strong feelings against it. But from a professional perspective, as a member of the Board of Supervisors, the county has a responsibility. We have ordinances in place. So we have a responsibility to engage our constituents in that process, but we have a long way to go. We are living with the history of some very bad actors in marijuana grow across California, and so we have a lot to overcome to build that confidence and that trust. Sheriff's Office is working very hard to ensure the safety of our residents and their own officers, and we know what happened to Deputy Ismail almost a year ago this time. And so we have a responsibility, and I absolutely support the sheriff, ensuring that there are not illegal operations out there, putting our citizens or our law enforcement personnel at risk. We, as a county, will need to continue to work forward, working through the existing processes for legal grows and work that through over time with community involvement, involvement of our law enforcement program, and every stakeholder that needs to be involved to look at that program very methodically.
Thank you. George, can you answer the question?
Well, one of the biggest things and stuff like that, I do support the sheriff 100%, but there's other things that this county could also do. We need to look at what it could bring to our county, if it could bring revenue and stuff, but do it the right way. Do it the legal way. You know, I don't agree with these illegal grows. I think it's wrong. What happened to Brian Ismail, which was a very good friend of mine, and Don and Kim, I've known him for a long, long time and stuff, was a tragedy. And Sheriff now is cleaning these illegal grows up and stuff, illegal grows. But if it's a legal grow, you know, I think you're averaging, I think, six plants. I'm not really quite sure. There's something I need to look into a little bit more. I don't really know a lot about it and stuff. But if there's ways to help these people, that, you know, if they do it the right way, I could look at that, but it's got to be legal. It has to be. You know, I've never done that kind of stuff. You know, I really don't even drink. You know, that's just the way I am. My nature is, especially being a pastor of a church. So I just, I think that's something that we could look into, but I do not support these illegal grows. It's got to be done the right way. And I think the Board of Supervisors need to take a good perspective, look at it, and see what things we can do or what we can't do.
Thank you. And this next question, we'll start off with you, George. There's been a lot of talk around the county about defunding law enforcement with different interpretations. So what would defunding law enforcement mean to you? And what changes, if any, do you support for local law enforcement?
Well, I support law enforcement 100%. I really do. I have been on the back of the blue rallies and stuff. I care about all the officers. I don't think we have enough manpower, to be honest with you, to sustain, especially with the growing, this county is growing. We need to look into the budget and see that we can get more money there to put into law enforcement, so we can hire a few more deputies and stuff. And I think this county wastes too much money on consultants and reaching outside, where that money could be sustained here in our county, so we can basically put it into public safety. Our Sheriff's Department, I feel, is the oldest Sheriff's Department in California when it was way back in the 1800s. And I want to make sure that they get the tools and everything they need, because law enforcement is a big thing. You know, I don't want some social worker coming to my house, especially if somebody breaks into my house and stuff, and they send a social worker out. You know, that's not right at all, and all it does is create more problems. We need to make sure that we have a good law enforcement facility in our county, which is, the Sheriff's Office is great, but I think we need to expand on it. And I will make sure, if I get elected, to make sure that the Sheriff's Office gets the money and the adequate money they have, especially when it comes to public safety.
Thank you. Ken, would you like to answer the question, please?
Absolutely. So I'm 100% in support of our law enforcement departments here in the county, both the Sheriff's Office and both police departments. No option that I have involves defunding the police in any way. I've had 30 years in my career working side by side with law enforcement. I know what they face every day. I know the challenges they see, the issues they face that most people will never see in their lifetime. I have a strong feeling that we need to, again, better support them, provide them with the I have a strong feeling that we need to, again, better support them, provide them with the resources and the tools they need to be able to do their job and do it safely. I think we have some opportunities going forward, working with our health and human services programs, our social workers. Not to send them to 911 calls, uh, where there's violence involved. But to work together with our law enforcement program where they can learn from each other and, and be able to provide better opportunities for all of us. Uh, I think well-trained officers going in that understand some of the challenges with, uh, social issues. Psychiatric issues, our homeless population. It's always our law enforcement, uh, men and women that are the first in and have to deal with these challenges. So let's help them get the tools to do that. And let's also have a community, an opportunity or a community to share ideas through whatever venue is appropriate, but it's continued to bring our law enforcement and our community closer together. And work towards finding opportunities where we may disagree to work together. So we don't have the issues that we've seen in other parts of the state.
Thank you. And this next question, we'll start off with you, Ken. Uh, the El Dorado County senior programs have been a lifesaver this past year. You know, delivering meals and vital services to elders throughout the district. Um, can you tell us what your plans would be to meet the current and future needs of the district's senior citizens?
Absolutely. Well, first and foremost, we've got to, uh, as quickly as we can, get the senior programs back online. The, the senior program is one of the most significantly hit of the county's social or the county's programs. Uh, again, because of the social distancing and the issues of transmission of COVID. So the daycare, the day programs, the recreational programs, the very things that the seniors depend on to, to have social interaction. Um, all took some of the most significant hits during those programs. So number one, it's ensuring we can get those programs back online. Uh, finding a way to safely, and I know we're doing that as a county, but that has to be a priority. It's ensuring that our, our meal programs, uh, continue to, uh, provide those meals and even expand them. There were opportunities during COVID with some additional funding, uh, to be able to provide meals, uh, delivered to homes. So we need to continue to find those opportunities. Our population is, our senior population is continuing to grow. The, the average age, the mean age in our county and other counties in the state, uh, continues to increase. People are living longer. So then people want to age in place. They don't want to necessarily come, uh, to retirement facility. They want to age out in their own home. Well, that creates challenges on our ability as a county to provide those services. So how do we partner with faith-based groups, with other social programs, uh, to help those, uh, families? Those, uh, seniors in our community, uh, live out their senior years, uh, in their home where they're comfortable uh, with their families, the way they want to be. So we have a lot of work to continue to work in this new paradigm.
Thank you. George.
Well, seniors are very, very much, uh, you know, touches my heart a lot. Let me tell you, uh, the El Dorado County Food Bank and myself, our little church here. We, we serviced, uh, and sent a lot of food to these seniors, especially during this time of this COVID. Where they can't even get out of their homes. So we made sure that they had food, adequate food that would sustain for a week or two weeks until we get another shipment of food in. The senior program is very, very critical in our county and I will make sure that it maintains it. Let me, let me tell you a little bit about when I spoke in front of the board one time. And, uh, what they wanted to do is do away with the senior lunches. And one of the supervisors was talking about it. He says, well, there's a lot of wealthy seniors in here, you know, we, we, you know, we can do away with it. Cause it'll save the county a lot of money. That's not what it's about. It's not about money. You know, when you lose your spouse, you know, your loved one and stuff like that. You need to interming, mingle with other seniors and stuff. And that's what people want, especially when their family live far, far away. Or, or they're, you know, and their family, you know, their, their sons and daughters, they work, can't be with them. And so we need to make sure that we maintain that because that's what it is. It's good therapy is what it is. Especially the seniors that are all alone, you know what I mean? And, and they need to reach out to other seniors and stuff. It, it's, it's a great program. I will make sure that it never, never gets, uh, you know, we, we don't lose our senior programs because once we lose our senior programs, then the seniors, that's going to be, that's going to be detrimental to our seniors and stuff. So I will make sure of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And George, we'll be starting with you, uh, for the next question. And one voter writes in about what is your opinion of the restrictions put on businesses by the state and county public health officer during the pandemic? And the follow-up question is how will you mitigate the negative financial impacts of the pandemic?
Well, the problem is right now, being a small business owner as myself. You know, people don't really know, you know, especially people that work for government for years and years and years. They don't know what it's like to run a small business. I do. Especially being in business 47 years. You put your life and your soul into that business. You put all your life savings in that business. And now they want to take it away from you? We need to open our county up. We need, we need to put these people back to work. Not only that, we're losing the tax base in our county because of it. The best, the small businesses in our country are the backbones and financial assets to sustain our country. Is our small businesses. And, and I think what they're doing to small businesses right now, like the one down here at El Dorado Cafe just hit with a fine of $8,200. Wow. I mean, that's decimal. I can't, I can't believe they would even do that. You know, I mean, come on. Let's, let's open these things up. Let's put people back to work. Let's sustain these businesses. So these, they can have a future. They have to feed their families. They're not making, making government money, you know, government job or retirement and stuff. You, you, you get $160,000 a year or plus or whatever. These people are struggling every day as a small business. And I will make sure that we need to open our county up, and I'll make sure that we do that if I get elected.
Thank you. Ken, your turn to answer.
So there is no, uh, question that, uh, the pandemic has just had an absolute devastating effect on public health and on our businesses here in the county. Uh, the Sierra Business Council indicates that potentially as many as 50% of the businesses could go under uh, as a result of this within the, the Sierra foothills here in California. It is a real issue. But I will tell you, the county from the very beginning, within days of the COVID, uh, you know, the state locking down, opened the emergency operations center. Put all of the organizations and stakeholders and agencies together under one umbrella with the C A O and the public health officer. So it could be coordinated. It didn't just involve government agencies. It was our business community. It was our health community. It was our senior community. All working to try to figure out not just how to deal with the immediate public health crisis. But how do we already start thinking about getting reopened? It has been a challenge working in all the counties because of the changing paradigm and changing message coming from Sacramento. But this county from the beginning has taken the approach, we're going to continue to push right to the edge and advocate. Because we are doing a good job. Our, our fatality rates have been extremely low. Our case rates have been low comparative to other places, but we're doing it the right way. We're doing it methodically. We're following the rules. Cause at the end of the day, millions and millions of dollars are coming from the federal and state government to support our businesses and our programs. So we need to continue to reopen. We need to continue to follow those guidelines. We need to use CARES Act funding through the El Dorado Community Foundation to keep our businesses going. Uh, ultimately, we need to keep working until we can get our businesses back online and the economy recovers. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our next question, Ken, you will be starting this one. And this one's about homelessness. Homelessness has grown significantly in parts of El Dorado County. Will you commit to creating permanent homeless shelters so we can move people out of these homeless camps?
We absolutely have to work on opportunities for our homeless. Uh, what's working, what's happening now obviously, uh, is, is challenging and is not working. Uh, the impacts to private property, uh, the conflicts, the, the waste, uh, uh, the, the public health issues, both for the, the members of the homeless, uh, camps and for the surrounding public. All of that is creating a really an untenable situation. And it's really got to be something that we look at that's multifaceted. One is working with each of these families and individuals that are homeless to, you know, what is their story? How can we help them help themselves wherever we can? Is it helping hand through our faith-based organizations or through others to, to get a leg up and, and, and get what they need? Many of these families are veterans or they're families that just can't afford because of the economy. Do they need temporary shelter? Again, just to get, make ends meet until they can get back on their feet. I, we need to look at options. What, where can we safely provide housing without obviously enabling people to permanently occupy an area? We need to make it safe. We don't want to put people in a position, uh, where there is a risk of fire, uh, where there's a risk of sanitary issues, all of that. So we need to find a, a place in the community that we're, will be accepted. And I think this is not just a government responsibility. This is working together with stakeholders, our faith-based groups, the sheriff's hot team, all these organizations to find the best opportunities. But yes, we can't leave every one of these folks and just ignore them out on the street. We have to find opportunities for care and shelter so they can get back online. Thank you.
Thank you. George.
See, our homeless population is, is, seems like it's growing a lot lately, especially with this coronavirus that's going on. A lot of people have lost their homes, lost their places to live. So you've got to understand our homeless population is increasing. I would like to see that, uh, that we do something with our homeless. I have a 12-step program that I've worked on. And in one, when elected, I will put that 12-step program in place. Uh, I've talked about it in other forums and stuff and, and also working with law enforcement. You know, there, there's a lot of things that goes on, especially we have a drug problem that's really, really bad in our county. And, and it's, it's crank or heroin is what they call it anyway. And that's one of the biggest things that's going on. And, uh, and I think we need to crack down a little bit more on that, you know? And so it might help that we don't have as so many homeless people that we have in our county. But the homeless population, we need to do, we need to find a way to consult. We just can't throw money at it and, and think it's going to fix itself. It can't happen. You know, there's money set aside. I know that right now. But let's work on to try to have them adequate housing, uh, places where they can go in and take showers and stuff. Uh, be able to, uh, have especially a warm meal, you know, uh, where they can especially get out of the cold. So I've got a lot of good ideas on that and that's 12-step program. When I put it, it will help the, the homeless population we have in El Dorado County.
Thank you. And switching gears a bit, um, the next question, we'll start with George. And this is about, um, trails, uh, throughout the district. Um, it's our understanding that the county has paved bike path trail money available now. Uh, will you bring forth a detailed agenda that will make the El Dorado Trail great again?
Well, the thing is, is I talked about this many, many times in years to ask. Especially bringing a, uh, excursion, we could bring up from Folsom all the way into the little town of El Dorado. And I talked about building a little town where we have a Tasbury shop and we have a blacksmith shop. We have a person that is a tin maker. There's a lot of good ideas and stuff, but also it would bring revenue and support our little town in El Dorado, but also our county. So it's back at a little western town that we could put in, uh, you know, back in the, from the old days and stuff. And it'll, it'll, it'll help tourism a lot. I think our little thing is, is, is a fantastic thing what's going on. If you remember one of my, if you look at my signs and stuff that I have, the yellow ones, I have the railroad tracks on the outside and the diamond. Well, that was supporting the trains, but also on the other side, it also had a trail. So yeah, the tracks on one side, and then you have the trails on the other side. And that's what they're doing today from that one part from Shingle Springs up to the town of El Dorado. I think it's a great thing. And, uh, also would help our tourism, especially Apple Hill, our wineries. Especially when this excursion train can come. It's too bad we can't bring it all the way up to Apple Hill. It would just be awesome. Maybe something in the future. You never know. You never know what, uh, what we can do to bring more tourism here to our county. But I think the trails is a great thing and, and I support it 100%.
Thank you. Ken, can you answer the question?
Absolutely. So the importance of the original decision to maintain that right of way in that trail to protect, protect it from further degradation, I think was very forward thinking on behalf of the residents, uh, the community and the county so that we are, have the ability to have this discussion now. You know, as a lifelong, you know, coming from a family, as a lifelong rail enthusiast and, and enjoying the history of our county. We can never lose the history. We have to have that opportunity to educate our future generations. It tells the story of, you know, how we got here and this county in particular was so important. We have to balance that with, obviously we have 190,000 plus people living in the county now. We're bringing in lots of, there was new generations coming. They like to be outside. We, we want people outside. We want recreation. So we really have to be looking at, how do we balance? And I think there's, we can do this if we work together, balance and share the opportunities through that, the, the, the railroad right of way for equestrian, uh, bike hiking and portions for the railroad as has been talked about. We, but it's going to take some work because I know there's a number of competing interests. But the trail is very important to get people outside. It's what many of our residents want. And so we just need to stay at the table and find some solutions so that we maintain the integrity of our history and have that railroad, but at the same time, provide opportunities for the trails and recreational opportunities that so many people here in the county want.
Thank you. And for our next question, this is directed at you first, Ken. Um, are there any capital improvement projects that you'd be willing to see the county go into debt to finance?
Well, it's, it's hard to look at. Something I'm going to have to sit down as we dive into. You know, if I were supervisor and we sit down with the administrative officer and dive into the budget and where the, the future projects are. But the sheriff's, uh, the new sheriff's facility is a perfect example of how we take an opportunity and we not just fund, uh, you know, through debt, a, a facility. But we find other opportunities to fund it that lower that, that liability. And going out to the USDA, uh, and helping get funding, uh, to bring down that cost. There are a lot of opportunities where we can go out and find funding, one-time funding, uh, to help us offset some of that so that we can make some decisions. And the challenges are funds are very specific. And so we need to do our research as we're proposing opportunities going forward. We may move things in priority depending on where other funding opportunities come in that make it more attractive to the county. But we have, so that we need to make the hard decisions is the status of our, our, our infrastructure. What's the best investment? What's needed most for capital outlay? And what opportunities do we have outside of just debt, uh, to help offset those costs?
Thank you. George.
Well, I think we need to look at different areas and stuff, uh, the county. I think that the sheriff's department was supposed to be, I think it was supposed to be like, uh, I think 20 or 30 million dollars. Now I think it ended up for a hundred thousand or $200,000 to build that facility. I mean, we need to look at different ideas and stuff like that to bring those costs down. Especially if we look at new ideas and new buildings that we're going to be building in the future. I says, we, you know, we just can't put ourselves in, in so much debt because how are we going to ever be able to get out of it? Especially this county, we don't have the businesses here to sustain it right now. And, and to do that, we've got to bring new ideas and new technology to our county, but also new businesses.
It looks like we may have lost George, so we will wait for him to rejoin. And we will give him a little bit of his time back when he does that. There he is.
Yeah, you got me? Okay. Well, the thing is, is it, we need to not waste so much money. Need to be wise and smart when they, when we design or build these new facilities and stuff. And you know, one of the biggest things with, with the sheriff's department, what I couldn't hardly believe is these other two people that went in and, and they put bids on it. And the county ended up paying them $40,000 each. Well, that's wrong. You know, I mean, because they were what the lower bidders or the higher bidders? I'm not really too sure on that. But you know, we need to stop doing that. We need to stop wasting money. We need to, you know, to, to look at it. We need to get, we need to balance, you know, our, our, our stuff and make sure that we get what we want for the right price. And not spend so much money because that's, I think we've been doing in the past. And I do not want this county to be in so much debt. So, and the only way we can get out of debt is to bring more ideas and new technology to our county, especially more businesses.
Thank you. Okay, Fern, we have a time for about two more questions, I think. Is that correct, Andrew? Great. Okay. So for the next question, we'll be starting with you, George. And this is about our county pay scales. They fall well below those of similar counties and it's impacting the level and quality of service to the public, employee morale and the ability to retain talented workers. Um, if you are elected, will you commit to paying comparable and fair wages?
Yes, and that's one of the biggest complaints that a lot of the employees have today. You know, the thing is, as you're a supervisor today, you're not allowed to really go out and talk to people. They're like the worky worker bees. You have to go through five different people to be able to talk to them. I want to make sure that that goes away. If I want to talk to somebody on the road crew, a worker that's working at holding the sign or, or he's, he's grading the road or he's, or he's digging ditches, whatever, I should have the right to be able to do that. And it, it's gotten away from that now. We need to be able to build a morale in this county, especially with the workers. They're not getting paid the adequate kind of money that they need to be. And it seems like that we end up paying more for administrative part of it. These people are at these high-paid salaries and stuff. I, I, I'm appalled by that. Especially these guys that are getting paid somewhere more than the president of the United States is paid, getting paid. I mean, it's unbelievable. Our governor in North California, you know, the worker bees. you know, the worker bees are the, are the ones that are doing the work in this county. And I think they make sure that, we need to make sure that they get good, adequate pay so they can help their families because a lot of these people don't even live here. They can't afford to live in this county with the high cost of the housing and stuff. They have to live somewhere else like Amador County or Placer County, and then they have to commute over here because they can't afford to live here, especially on the salary they make from the county.
Thank you. Ken?
I feel very strongly about our, our county employees working here in El Dorado County. I've had a chance to meet many. I had, I had a chat with the probation officers just the other day, and I've met many others. And an amazing group of people working hard. And absolutely, El Dorado County doesn't meet the same pay structure as our surrounding counties, particularly in Sacramento or Placer County. You know, unfortunately, we're the victim of our rural lifestyle in this case. We don't have the population. So we don't have the revenue to be able to have those competitive pay schemes. But that shouldn't be our excuse for underpaying our employees. And I know the current board, you read the existing strategic plan that's really guiding the county. It talks about continuing to work to bring up our county employees' salaries and wages. We may never get to be comparable to Placer County, but it acknowledges that we've got to get it up to the median. We've got to get it up at least on the underside, the low side of median. It's going to be challenging. I think we all know that. And so at the end of the day, we have to continue to work with our employee labor organizations, with our departments, and have the discussions. How can we year-to-year get there when we're negotiating our collective bargaining agreements? How do we plan for the long term and discuss what kind of incremental raises could occur? Of course, everything depends on budget and what things may look like with revenues down the road. But I certainly have a commitment to finding every opportunity to try to bring those pay structures and pay scales up to a decent wage that allows people to live here in El Dorado County and, and really get compensated for the hard work that they do.
Thank you. And it looks like we have time for one more question before we move on to closing statements. So we will start with you, Ken, on this final question. And this is about technology. How will you make technology improvements and what is, would be your specific plan for District Two?
So I think we talked about it early on in the, in the discussion tonight, and that is particularly with COVID and the pandemic and how so many people are now working from home. It has really brought to light how important infrastructure, broadband infrastructure, access to the internet is in this county, and particularly in South County. The further you get away from the Highway 50 corridor, the more challenging it is to even have a Zoom discussion like we're having tonight. We have to be able to continue to look for the long-term investment to build out that, that broadband throughout our county. It's going to be a public-private partnership. It has to be. County's already been working on getting estimates. This is an expensive proposition. I believe the current estimate on the table is, it's a, it's a $2 billion investment in infrastructure with at least as much more in potential bond or interest payments. So I don't know how we get there with that. We've got to find some opportunities to continue to work on this. And again, the more we can bring business and the more we can bring in revenue to reinvest into this kind of infrastructure, it's a perfect opportunity to maintain our lifestyle, particularly in the rural areas, and allow people to work from home, reduce the traffic on our roads, reduce smog and pollution, and, and really have people more comfortable, you know, again, living and working anywhere they're at. But we've got to continue to find some solutions to build out that infrastructure first and foremost. We need to continue to work on a plan, and it's going to take the next five to 10 years easily to get that done.
Thank you. George?
Well, I think like Ken was hinting on, broadband is very critical in our county and stuff. And we've got to make sure that we expand and bring that infrastructure to our county and expand to it because, so these people can reach out and, and bring a lot of the different things that they can work out. But we need to bring new ideas and new technology here. One of the biggest things that I talked to, even Tesla way back when, I was even talking to them to bring the battery plant that would be here in El Dorado County. But the problem is we're not business-friendly. This county is not. It hasn't been for a long, long time. And if we would have had that Tesla plant, let's just say hypothetically, built at the West Olvia facility, it would have been a great place to put that plant. You know, we had the same thing happen with Intel. Look what happened with Intel. We had a chance to have it in our county. Well, the board couldn't decide and stuff, and where they build it in Folsom. Look what's, look at the revenue and, and all the tax base that is brought to Folsom, you know, and we've lost out on that. So we need to be more business-friendly, you know? And I talked, like I say, I'm, I'm going to preach on it again. We, we need to build that cogent plant, invest in composting. There's a lot of ideas and new technology that we could bring to our county, especially when I was on the solid waste advisory committee. Waste management, not Waste Connection, but waste management is already doing that. They have a facility that's in Kenosha right now that produces electricity just off of garbage. They burn their garbage and it produces electricity for our city. Wouldn't it be a great thing? We could do the same thing here in our county. It would give us high-paying jobs. It would bring new ideas, new, and, and sustain, you know, our growth. I know, but we need, we need to do something to help our county, and the only way to do that, we've got to be more business-friendly.
Thank you, George. And now we're going to move on to closing statements. Each of you will have one minute to make your closing statement. And for this round, George, you're going to start first with your closing statement, so please go ahead.
Okay. You know, I, I've been in this county for a long time. Our family, I'm, I'm a generation. You know, I'm pretty much related to a lot of the old-time families, especially, you know, that are, that have lived here all their lives. And I care about the people here in this county. I've always have. You know, I mean, when people move here and stuff like that, you know, they want to make sure that we maintain rural lifestyle that we all enjoy. You know, I love where I live in Somerset, especially with, with, you know, I have a lot of wildlife and stuff, and I enjoy that, especially sitting on the deck and having a cup of coffee out there. I just care about the people here, especially, you know, working at the church. I'm a pastor of the El Dorado Community Church, the oldest active church in El Dorado County, and working with people and helping people, especially with the food bank that we put in place, you know, especially when people are really hurting right now. So being a pastor, you know, I reach out to others and stuff, and especially when they need help. And I just care about people. I care about this county. I love this county, and I have a lot of deep roots. And I, and I don't want to see this county be looking like Sacramento. I really don't. We may make sure that we sustain our rural lifestyle.
Thank you, George. Ken, closing remarks?
Thank you. So I'm obviously a relatively newcomer to El Dorado County, but I'm not a newcomer to the issues and the experience that we need to navigate as we go forward in the next several years with the budget challenges that we know we'll face because of the pandemic and the struggles our businesses will have, the needs to improve our infrastructure, building relationships, all things that I've done over 30 years of my career. I want to engage and use that experience where I live. I too, my family enjoys living in this lifestyle. We moved here for a reason, and we don't plan to leave. So I also want to make sure I leave El Dorado County better than I founded, if you will, and, and continue to use my skill set and my abilities to continue to make the improvements for all of us here in the county. Want to hear what folks have concerns about, find those things that we can really dig in and work on, continue to work on our public safety and our many issues that we're all concerned about here. And again, definitely want to do it in El Dorado County. It's where we're here to stay. And again, thank you to the League for hosting us tonight.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Elizabeth Leslie, and I'm here from the League of Women Voters of El Dorado County. Thank you to both of our candidates, Ken and George, for taking the time to answer so many of the voters' questions. We really appreciate your time and being civil and informative. You will be able to find this video later on YouTube. We will be sharing it with the candidates. And you can also find more information and this video on our online nonpartisan voter guide, votersedge.org. Also, as a reminder, the League is celebrating our 100th birthday this year. What a great time to join the League. So find out how to get involved by going to our League website at l w v eldorado.org. And don't forget to vote on November 3rd.